Roll call. Present. She's here, Ms. McDaniel, but she just advised me right now that she is on a phone call outside the courtroom doors, so we'll note that she's present, but hasn't called for a roll call, but we do have a 1.3 page of allegiance, and so leave the text flag. Testimony oath of presenters, please be advised that if you are here presenting before the Commissioner's Court, you are under oath. 1.5 Public comments. Go ahead, sir. You have three minutes.
Good morning, my name is Michael Coates, and I'm the Grand Compliance Officer for Neighborhood Housing Services of Demet County Incorporated. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today because what I'm proposing will not only meet critical housing needs, but also directly benefit the county and its residents in measurable ways. Currently, Demet County has over 90 tax delinquent properties representing untapped value of the community. By granting access to these properties, we can transform them into productive assets, properties that generate tax revenue, create jobs, and stabilize neighborhoods. For example, the assessed value of 58 vacant properties in Carrizo Springs alone totaled $2.9 million. If redeveloped, these properties could contribute significantly to the local tax base while reducing the county's cost of maintaining or policing these vacant lots. Each day that passes without action is another day these families remain without safe and affordable housing, and our community loses out on untapped economic potential. I'm requesting immediate access to these tax delinquent properties. This partnership will allow us to move quickly in addressing housing shortages and reversing the negative impacts of vacancy and blight. By supporting this initiative, you align yourself with a solution that delivers economic growth, improves public safety, and enhances your legacy as leader, driving positive change in Demet County. Together, we can create Demet County where families thrive, neighborhoods flourish, and every property is used to its fullest potential. Your decision today can set this transformation in motion, positioning the county as a leader in affordable housing and community revitalization. This is a defining moment for our future. By taking action now, we can build more than houses, we can build hope and opportunity for future generations. Your support today will lay the foundation for meaningful progress, and I want to thank you for your leadership and dedication to the people of Demet County. I look forward to presenting a full funding proposal in July, but today I urge you to grant access to these properties to make change happen now. Thank you for your time and believing in the power of the community.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? No other public comments has been done. 1.6 Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting, December 16, 2024, and Special Meeting Minutes, January 6, 2025. Motion by Commissioner Honto Carmona.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Orenda. Any further discussion?
Judge, on the minutes, there was a correction to get the correction.
Yes, ma'am. On which minutes?
On the last Commissioner's Board, December 6th, the regular minute.
Where's the? Did it work the USB?
No, it says December. Did it work in your end, Judge?
I gave her my USB.
Yeah, but it's not.
I didn't put it on.
Judge, on the tax notes, we had approved the minute, we had approved it with the exception of the tax notes for serious claim 23. We were waiting on the approval of the contract for this sports complex. I made the motion that everything would get paid except for the tax note 2023. Mr. Juan Carmona had made the second, and we all agreed, just me, you, and Mr. Carmona, Mr. Orenda, and Commissioner.
They weren't here.
Orenda and Commissioner Juan so weren't here. And the minutes at stake gets approved.
Yes, because we had approved it, you were the only one that did not approve that particular tax note.
I made the motion, and Mr. Juan Carmona made the second.
Yes, to approve everything.
Except the tax note. And he agreed, and then you all saw it.
Is it yours or whose? Oh, because I brought it by myself, Karen.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. What was your call?
Commissioner Rukawa is saying that it was approved. I disagree on the way that the motion was, and me and Juan Carmona had approved it. Obviously, unfortunately, he's not here to put his position in. So we're gonna, I guess the motion, or the correction is that everything was approved except the sealed tax note 2023.
When do we approve it?
When do we approve it? Yep, my position is, I mean, we did approve it.
I mean, that a conference, part treasurer.
Mr. Ortiz, he told me.
Has it been paid? Has it been paid?
Yes.
Yes, it was paid.
Without the approval? I mean, it's, right now, it's, I said please say, but we need to go back to find out what actually transpired because.
Well, on the minute, he went by the minutes, and that's what Mr. Perida had advised us to go by the minutes, and the way Mr. Garcia wrote the minutes, and the way Mr. Garcia advised us, and I think advised Mr. Ortiz, was that it was approved. However, Commissioner Rukawa was the only one that opposed it.
I opposed it, and they voted on it.
You did, you did oppose it, and we voted, we voted that everything would get approved.
With the exception.
With the exception that you were opposing that particular one. So it was two to one. The way that I understood it, Commissioner.
The way I understood it was, I opposed it, and we all voted on it.
I was just going, he just went by the minutes.
So you had two votes, two one?
The way that I understood it, the way Commissioner Juan understood it, but Commissioner Rukawa says that's not the way that she opposed it.
Commissioner Rukawa opposed it, her vote still opposing the approval, but you had two votes, you won, correct?
That's the way I understood it.
And the way I understood it was the other way, because I opposed it, and we all agreed on it.
The minutes go, the official minutes are the ones by the county clerk. The videos just for transparency purposes.
But this is, the video is listed as a regular auto?
No.
But would Oscar, President, Oscar know? Is he going to see?
No, he knows. He went to go and ask Mr. Ortiz, Mr. Garcia.
I went to go talk to him about it, and he just said that was something that needs to be brought up on this.
So then y'all guys aren't given an understanding if it was approved or not?
At first, I was under the impression it wasn't approved, and then, he's not here, but he had told me that it was approved subject to Commissioner reviewing the contract.
And how we review the contract?
It's on the, it's on the nugget today.
So then it just stands till the end?
I suppose. So the motion on the floor is to, is that, what's your motion, Commissioner Honto? You're the one that made the motion.
Well, I, it's really, I'm glad too late, nobody's got to look into it, so my motion is gonna be to accept the minutes with the correction of Ms. Rukawa, and try and find out what actually transpired, because we weren't here, so as I read the minutes, I thought it was Rukawa. But I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a correction, to be looked into that item, and I don't know if we can, if we able to read Mr. Carmona on that moment that, when he was sitting here.
Yes, sir.
As a Commissioner, if he's able to be contacted and asked what he, he went by that day.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Carmona.
Former.
Yes. So we can, we can clarify it, because if.
We have to go.
We're gonna have to do something about that motion, too.
Yes, sir.
And then I just bring it up on the next meeting?
I sure will. Your second, Commissioner Orenda? All in favor?
Aye.
In the opposition? Motion carries. 2.1 Drug Testing and Safety Presentation by La Vernea Insurance, Commissioners, Mr. Pruski, but some items, tendered some items to you, and if you have any doubts over that.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, thank you all for having us here. County Auditor had requested us to look into, possibly work on the drug testing and safety program for the county. I have with me Jaime Barrigas, he's from Eagle Pass, he has worked with this procedure and implementation of this type of plan before, and he'll be very helpful, so I will turn the mic over to him.
Good morning, Judge. Commanders. Hope everybody had a great New Year. We are here just to discuss a little bit briefly, I thought, I said up in order, Mr. Pruski done some safety and drug policies in other counties, and we're gonna work, try to work with you all to do something. We requested your policy handbook, and what we handed over to you was a handbook that was adopted March 2023 by Commissioners Court here in Demet County. And if we looked, and you should have it there, if we looked through that, you know, as I reviewed this, I saw some, you know, some potential things that need to be, you know, implemented or worked on, and pre-employment testing is under the handbook was required by Demet County Commissioners. I don't know if we're adhering to that, if we're not adhering to that, or what, if anything needs to be adjusted, as far as that.
It's on page three.
Yeah, on page three. It says, "Pre-employment testing to ensure the safety and efficiency of employees, Demet County requires a pre-employment drug and alcohol screen before any employee starts their first day of work. All other officer offers or employment are conditional upon passing a drug and alcohol test." So as I work through the liability side, claims go hand in hand, they can also revert back to a policy was adopted by the court. We just want to make sure that this is being followed, implemented, or having new hires within the court. And then, we also have in here that, looking through, any Commissioner can request a drug screen at any time, and they can also request this through a hair follicle sample. A hair follicle sample remains in the bloodstream of the hair follicle for up to 90 days. So just, just that we know that when we do request as a Commissioner, you know, whether it could be before their employment, their employment will be, could have been hired today, pass the drug test, urine test. If, two months from now, you request a random test through follicle, it will be positive. I don't know if there's anything that's made, you know, portion of that, it says, okay, well, it's, we can't go retroactive to the hire, because if we would have done it, then it would have been positive by the time of hiring. So I don't know, we have to make an adjustment in this policy, you know, for that, was the recommendation, that we would look into that, and.
But that, in particular, in the reading, that particular bulletin on there, it specifies in cases of post-serious accident.
Post-serious, if you look at.
I'm looking at page three. So that tells me that the hair follicle will be required, but in case of post-serious accidents.
Post-accident test, all employees directly involved in on-the-job accident or incident resulting in property damage and/or medical treatment will require to be tested by urine analysis and/or blood test within 24 hours of the accident. So within 24 hours of the accident, we're requesting a urine analysis and blood test.
Within 24 hours.
Within 24 hours.
But not hair follicle?
Not hair follicle.
So then word is hair.
So the hair, if you go down into here, "Any elected official, supervisor, or county official who requests an employee to be tested shall use the following procedures. Employee will be sent to designated facility for specimen collection and/or testing. Testified will be a hair follicle test and blood alcohol, but in case of post-serious accidents, urine analysis and/or blood test may be administered."
I have a question.
But maybe is, doesn't mean shall. May, I'm just speaking in legal terms, is that maybe, is maybe not required, it should be shall.
Yes.
Yes. If the elected official as a supervisor makes the call to standard an employee for workaholic or random, as the judge, person's word, he says he's stumbling, he feels he might be under leverage, does that person have to be in any type of own certifying to make that call, or can you just make it random?
According to your policy, elected official to make a random call.
The policy, under state Texas, would we be protected under the policy?
I would have to check that, you know, under your, according to my current practice, see if you have that, I would check that for you.
Thank you.
The first training that I went to, it was just like the tax said that drug testing should only be done, I guess by the state, you'd have to check into it, is pre-employment, post-accident, or results suspicion, or not able to perform randoms, like on an entire department. Is that true?
That, I would say, I would have to get with tax to do that, I don't have that answer to that right now, just review it over what was adopted in your policy.
That's your state.
That's what, yeah, because that's what I understood.
But I will get that after we come back to, and I'll report it. Going through the drug exams, that's the things that I, that I picked up and saw in the policy that was already adopted, like since March of 2023. We will be reviewing your loss runs and loss history, to see where training can be implemented for your departments. Talking to Mr. Pruski, there's very, very few claims coming in on the workers' comp side, there's some auto claim, okay, it's severe, we do, we do have some frequency in the photo practice, in the Sheriff's Office, that we're gonna look into as far as doing some training, you know, into that, and, you know, we're hoping for any recommendations, if there's something you'd like to look at, or trainings that you might want to request for us to do, you know, we're here to, to help and work with the county once we can.
Thank you.
I have, I do have a question, yes. And I know this pertains more to the county than you, but being that you are an insurance agency, there's a line here that says types of discipline, my biggest concern is accountability at this point. Honestly, I can be, and I said it last week, I can be in my county truck, drive out, and rearing somebody, and I haven't seen yet the accountability for issues like that. We all know in this room that there's such a thing as an accident, but there's preventable and unpreventable accidents, in my opinion. So negligence can always take a role. So if somebody gets into a pattern of having frequent accidents, especially if we end up in lawsuits, I mean, there's got to be some kind of accountability, I would think. And that's where, that's what I think we're really not focused on at this point. Things continue to occur, we continue to spend, and at times even if on the lawsuit, there's no accountability for actions. So that's my concern at this point.
Accountability for who?
Whoever, whoever, if it's me, if I drive out and I have an accident, if it's, if it's considered that it could have been prevented, or if it was negligence on my part, I can say I was speeding, and I get a citation for speeding, driving out of the intersection in 19 bones, somebody, hey, that's, I mean, for most instances, even if you're in your personal vehicle, there's accountability there, because you'll get a citation, and then you'll be held accountable for repairing somebody else's vehicle. Usually, the story works on this exchange, maybe I don't know.
Yeah, it is, sir. I understand you correctly, Commissioner, what you want to see in a, the safety policy of a, employee has repeated accident, you want either accountability or training for that particular employee that's involved in this.
I feel like we need to take the proper action to try to control these type of situations, because it's kind of, it's kind of open, free for everybody right now. I mean, realistically, you can go back to our records, realize that we've had accidents and incidents, and there's been really no action taken, except for if the individual was fond of the influence, he was terminated at once. Other than that, they're still driving.
Let me interject to that, there is a point system for employees that we can implement, so much for a speeding ticket, so much for an accident, at fault, non-fault, and DWIs, et cetera. And if that employee doesn't meet that criteria, then we have to decide whether we're going to be willing not to let that employee drive, or are we going to figure out? It's always difficult, because if it's a key employee, it's a lot easier said than done. I'm being a realist, though, in this part, if I'm sitting there, and I've got my, one of my main operators I really need, and he can't drive, or we say he can't drive a motor vehicle on the road, or is he gonna be able to drive equipment on a job site? Those things are part of what we're talking about here.
So my question is, since it's listener under informational, do we have to get to the personal policy, so that there's Adam to ask questions? Okay, well, then I do have some questions and suggestions, but I'm gonna wait until it's.
Comes up.
Yeah, the time to attest it, because I'm a little recording.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to go with you for testing company?
We're gonna call you back, Mr. Pruski. On 3.2, or 2, yeah, 3.2. 2.2 The Presentation and Establishment of Bidder Contract for the Demet County Sports Complex. I tendered to the Commissioners, the contract, Commissioner Rukawa, that you were requesting for the Catamount Sports Complex for the lowest bidder. And just, so you can recall, and just to enlighten you, Commissioner Talamates, the Commissioners Court, I followed, we, I followed you. I followed the process, I guess historically, the process that was done previous to my tenure here as the county judge, so the way that the Commissioners approved it, in particular with this contract and previous contracts, the county judge was approved and authorized to negotiate and execute the contract with the lowest bidder. In this particular case, I've given you guys who the lowest bidder was, which was Catamount Inc., and negotiated with them, and that is the price of the sports con, Demet County Sports Complex, excuse me, that was executed, and the contract that was executed with Catamount. You have it, Commissioner?
I passed it to her.
Okay. And that's what I meant, Commissioner Rukawa. No, I gave it to you, but I'm asking her, she got it, Commissioner Rukawa, that.
Can I ask questions, because it's under information?
Go ahead.
Judge, Rayo, back in August 19 of this year, was brought to Commissioners Court for approval to authorize only judge to negotiate with lower, low bidders on the Demet County Sports Complex and finalize contract.
Yes, ma'am.
We did that, but you were, we didn't award it, so aren't we supposed to come back to Commissioners Court to get it awarded?
I did it the way that the previous county judge did it, and that's the same terminology that I put on. I did it the way that the previous county judge did it, and that's the same terminology that I put on here, the way he did it with the CSA building, and that's how I put it on this agenda.
But this is the first time we see the contract and knowing that the dollar amount for the sports complex will cost sixteen
Sixteen million.
Sixteen million, five hundred and forty, three hundred and six thousand dollars. And our tax note that we got for the sports complex was fifteen million dollars.
Correct.
So the remaining one million point six point five, where is he going to get paid?
I'm going to use my CO from the COs that we got this year, the one million.
Okay, and does this sixteen million include the FFE?
What is FFE?
The furniture, the equipment?
It includes everything, yes, ma'am.
So, okay.
Everything's included in that, and also just to advise you, Commissioner, we are set, and I, I think I spoke to you a little bit about it, but we'll put it on the next agenda at the end of the month, we are getting a donation from SM Energy, so that'll take away some of that cost. We're doing a presentation of a check from SM Energy to Demet County, because they're going to be donating towards that sports complex. And then last Friday, an individual came into my office, at the current time right now, wants to stay anonymous, but wants to donate a million dollars towards that Demet County Sports Complex as well. So I'll bring that back up to commissioners' court and obviously give you guys the reduced costs as it goes down on those prices, because right now, you'll see on there that the cost of what SM Energy is going to donate is still on the sixteen million.
Judge, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
And then also, Judge, I know up to date, up as of now, we have spent six point one million dollars already on the sports complex, and it's for sixteen million, so I went to the arena, and I hadn't seen any, I mean, they already started everything, the digging and all that, the geo and all that, but to me, it's already a big, large amount, six million dollars when nothing is being shown yet. My, I'm just worried because
I understand.
For sixteen million, and we already spent six million dollars.
What, and what I can do, Commissioner, at the next commissioners' court meeting, because what we do is we have quarterly meetings, and what I can do is I can bring you the agenda of those quarterly meetings, or more importantly, I can ask them if they, you want to be included in this, those quarterly meetings, so that you can see kind of what the update is in regards to what they're doing. I mean, for transparency purposes, if that's what you want.
Also, on this contract, did they, I guess, take off all the loads that we've been hauling? Well, I haven't helped, I know it's Mr. Urenda and Mr. Garuana, I know they haul more than two hundred loads of material, and the water, they've been using our water, so is it deducted on this contract?
There's a, a reserve right there of subtraction, so that sixteen million, there's a reserve, I think it's, what is it? I think it's one point five million in reserve, and that's where it'll get taken away from there.
Instead of paying them, that, the county will end up
Will end up getting that back.
So, so it would be seventeen million? No, 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 just, justice.
It's not what had been seventeen million, if you look at your document
No, they say sixteen million, but they're saying it the way you say it.
If you look at that item, there's an item in red, and it shows reserve, it's already included on there. Yes.
May I add, Justice?
Yes, ma'am. Do you see the one point five that it's for the concrete?
It's still included in the price, but it'll be a little less than that, we don't need that. You see that? So, let me, you see, you see. You see right here where it says one point five, it's already included in that sixteen million? But whenever, at the end of the, of the, when it's done, they'll remove that, so it'll go down to, what is it, fifteen million? I think they're going to have that.
So, um, hold it, because maybe I have to want to.
Judge, there's a, there's, and I know y'all going through it, but there's a fifty thousand dollar on demolishing, what did they demolish out there?
They took off all the previous dirt work that was there, all the grass, all the, they have to subgrade it, so they have to remove all the dirt that's there to get to the level where they need to get to, so that it could be at a, a certain subgrade for them to be able to build.
So what happened to that material?
It was put to the sign, but then it was reused for the elevation purposes. So it was there, but then they brought it back, some of it can't be used because it has a bunch of material that's not usable. And I think, one more, real quick, I think Mr. Pereira has the score sheets, and I can get those to you to show you guys that this was obviously the lowest bidder, y'all know, you weren't here, Commissioner Talamates, but this was the lowest bidder, so when it was approved by commissioners' court, was for me to negotiate, to try to bring that lowest bidder even down more, yes, but Catamount was the lowest bidder.
So you said we had a quarter of a meeting, is that something that we can both have set up special meetings for, so that we're all in the mood? Or is that just something that usually, since it's your, your department, you?
We, they have the meetings with me, but if you wanted to be included, we would have to have a special meeting, and that's more than, obviously, core.
I don't have to be included, I just want
I'll get you the paperwork.
Where we can be, be brought, or under public comment, commissioners' court, that way the public knows, the public, the public asks, how much are you guys paying for the sports complex, how much is it going to cost? I'm going to be honest, I didn't know, I said last time that we had commissioners' court, the lowest bidder was twenty million, which was Catamount.
Which was Catamount.
You were going to go back and negotiate with them, you had said it was eighteen, you had brought it down to eighteen or seventeen million.
And then we brought it.
Once we do the finalize, and it was never brought back, that's by capacity.
I, I completely
Dollar amount, that way I know what he told my constituents, how much it's going to cost, where it's coming from, and they're, I mean, because I know
I, I completely understand, yes, ma'am, I completely understand it, I wanted to be transparent, and I have no problem whatsoever. To put it on, you're completely right, when we first opened up those bids, the lowest bidder was twenty million dollars, which is Catamount. I went into negotiations with them back and forth, as did my auditor, Mr. Pereira and I, and we brought them down to the sixteen million, or really, it's fifteen million and change, but they put a reserve there of one point five million, which makes it sixteen point five. So we went from twenty to eighteen, down to fifteen, with one point five being a reserve. So it's on the papers, you see, it shows sixteen million, however, like I said, I have been working with Selena Rodriguez, unfortunately, she's not here right now, but we've been working closely together and hard to try to get donors. I did tell Commissioner Dukawa, I think last week or the week before, last week? Last week, that we are getting a donation, like I said, from SM Energy, so there'll be a check presentation, so that's going to kind of reduce more of the cost. And then, like I said, on Friday, I met with an individual, who at this time wants to stay anonymous, but has advised me that they do want to donate a million dollars for that sports complex. So that's going to reduce the cost of the sports complex as well. And we are in the process of applying, where Selena applied for a scholarship grant, if you will, for the playground area, so we're, we're, I'm trying to keep finding ways to reduce the cost. I mean, it is a big ticketed item, probably the biggest ticket item in a long time here in Demet County. I am trying to stay mindful of the cost, but at the same time, understanding that the costs keep going up in terms of how much it costs to build, period. And it's not getting any cheaper, to be honest with you, it's just getting more and more expensive. But I'm trying to keep in mind that I don't want to increase our tax dollars, and I've said that from two years ago, when commissioners' court was kind enough to approve for us to even start this project and to try to get a, a tax note on it, that I didn't want our constituents' taxes to go up, so I think this is a really, really big project, I think it's something that's going to be very beneficial for our community, for the youth of our community, once it's built. And I'm going to stand by it, because I think that regardless if I'm the judge or not, so many more people can use it, even after I'm out of here, after any of us are out of here, so I, I assure you that I'm trying my very best and working diligently to continue to try to get funds to deduce the costs of what the county, a county's going to spend. And you are completely right, Commissioner Dukawa, we did get a fifteen million dollar tax note. In addition to that, that, this last budget, we got five million dollars in COs to be split amongst each commissioner and the judge, and I wanted to allocate that million dollars to assist if I needed to, because you know that the costs keep going up. And, and right now, what's eating us a lot is the concrete, the concrete's going up, and so I wanted to have an extra million in reserve, but I'm hopeful, and I pray a lot, that we will have more people come up, and especially the oilfield companies that want to donate towards the Source Op, the sports complex, because at the end of the day, it's not going to be for us in personal level, but for the youth, for the community to use. So I, I can continue to get you those numbers, Commissioner Dukawa, but, so that you have an answer for your constituents at four, five, and seven, and for each commissioner here, that, that's the cost of sixteen million, and with one point five in, in reserve.
So I think that, like how you're saying, that, first of all, I am all for it, especially for our community in Demet County, there hasn't been anything like this built, so I can just to go on the record, it's something that I support, I think that it's going to be a great asset to the kids and to the youth in our area. But as you did mention, it is a big project, and it's probably the biggest project that we've had in Demet County in a long time. So I think I would request that we do special meetings with it, just to update us as well, because again, I wasn't here, but I do know that Juan was assisting me with, like, loading dirt, stuff like that, just so that we're all in communication, and we all understand what it's taking and how much it's taking, and then that way, we're on recording as well, so that way, if anybody wants to go back and see the progress on it, we're, they're able to go back as well, so it wouldn't be a situation where they would come to each commissioner ass, they would be able to look the, the video and see for themselves exactly what's being done, and, and how we're doing it. So I think that, from my recommendation, I would say that we schedule special meetings for it, because it's going to take teamwork between all of us. Like I said, I know that you need Juan to pour some dirt, and I don't mind helping you at all, if anything, if you need, but I think that we should do the special meetings for it. My next question is, I know that you said you had two donors, you said you had SM Energy and another anonymous donor. Are you going to put up your COs a million dollars? Is it going to be, like, let's say that anonymous donor donates the million dollars, will you be taking it out of your COs, or will you be taking it out of the, well, what's already allocated to it?
What's allocated to?
What's allocated to, so your million dollars, you're going to put up no matter what?
No, my million dollars is there for reserve, that's what I said, for reserve.
So then, I guess, just moving forward, I would say, since it's going to take a team effort from all commissioners, I would
Well, it's just a team effort from commissioners right now, because part of the negotiation process to reduce it from twenty million down to this fifteen million was we were going to be able to provide some of the dirt, so it wouldn't cost, because the dirt costs, for them to haul the dirt, for them to bring the dirt, it increases it, so that's where the negotiate came in, and Commissioner Urenda and Commissioner Juan reached out to me and said, hey, Judge, like, we'll help you bring dirt, so that
Bring the cost down.
To bring the cost down, from this point forward, where we stand, I don't foresee any, me asking for the commissioners for any more additional assistance, because at this point, it's on, everything else is on the contractor. From, from this point on, it's now building up. The main assistance was for the dirt work, because everything else is included in the, in the price tag in terms of the concrete, all of that, it's not going to be provided by the county. The only thing that was going to be provided by the county was bringing in dirt to level off, to do the subgrade, because it was going to cut costs.
So, and, and again, just, I know that, from when I left, Juan did advise me, he said that you were needing about a hundred and something loads of dirt, and
We don't, we don't need the dirt.
I, we only took six, that's why I was still
Yeah, he took, he brought six loads, because he, he reached out right before he left, that he wanted to find a way to help.
Okay.
But no, we don't need any more dirt.
We don't, so we're done with our?
Yes, we're done with dirt.
I, I still think that the special meetings, if we don't do them quarterly, just at least, however long it takes to do, just for the, the people.
No, definitely, I have no problem doing that.
Thank you. Those are the questions I have.
Judge, you did say that it included the FFE on it, right?
Tell me, you know what you meant by FFE?
FFE is the furniture?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, all of that's included.
Because I don't see it.
Yes, ma'am, it's all included, I can see if Mr. Calzada can give us a more open one, Mr. Pereira? But my, everything's included, all the correct?
My, my understanding, yes.
The ovens and all that stuff, because we're going to have concession stands.
That, that's probably why it's at that point, because the turf has been basically
Bought, or
So to speak, that way, whenever they're ready to install it, they're not waiting on production.
Does it also lock in the, the rate of, of it?
Absolutely.
What, did we do that with the concrete?
No, we can't.
We can't do that with the concrete?
And the commissioners more know about the concrete, because they do road and bridge, but you know how that is, Commissioner Dukawa? It changes, just the same with lumber. Thank you. Three point one, approval of bonds? We have no bonds. Three point two, discussion of appropriate action, approval of safety and drug testing policy. Commissioners, I'm going to, I believe Mr. Pereira requested for this item to be put on the agenda, but as you are aware in the presentation part of this item by Mr. Pruski, and tell me your name again, sir?
Hi, Rodriguez.
Mr. Rodriguez. There is still some issues, Mr. Pereira, that
Yes, Louis, excuse me, this was more
Can you, just because
This was more to set up the schedule and set up between commissioners' court and the insurance company, to set up a schedule to do the, the training for, for the, for the drivers and what have you, and also to set up conversations with the insurance companies, set up the, and correct the testing policy.
Correct.
So it was basically just to have, approve a schedule with the insurance company.
When you say schedule, you mean?
Well, like trainings, setup, that they present to
I understand, but I think that there still needs to be a very thorough discussion in terms of the proper terminology and verbiage that we want to include in the policy. In particular, because, as Mr. Rodriguez mentioned, that there was, there was two items on here that were of particular it's not as a concern, but that he wanted us to look into in regards to pre-employment testing, because obviously, the policy of Demet County requires a pre-employment drug testing, which I can't speak for everybody sitting up here, but from the two years that I've been the county judge, I don't think I've necessarily seen when people hire someone that they get pre-drug tested before employment, so obviously, we're not adhering to the policy that we have in place, one. And then, two, so Mr. Rodriguez advised that we, you know, set that particular policy. Additionally, there was a item on the testing procedures, which is what you're discussing, regarding that a hair follicle can be required in addition to when there's post-accidents, that there be urine analysis and/or blood testing, and currently, we only do urine analysis after an accident. And so Commissioner Talamates also disclosed to the court that the last training she went to, which is something that Mr. Urenda has advised with me in the past, and I, I know he's advised with you, in regards to the legality of us allowing or doing random drug tests, is that adhering with state law. And so the way that I read it, in particular, in the government code, was that the drug testing was testing was post-accidents, and also if there's reason to believe, that he would look into it. So I think before we can make any kind of decision, I think that we really need to dissect our policy and sit down with Mr. Ortiz, as he is the county's HR, myself, you, and probably Mr. Pruski and Mr. Rodriguez, and get some clarification before we bring it back to the court.
If that was the intent, basically to move forward with it and correct, make any corrections that need to be done to it, but also if there is training, I don't know if they mentioned, for the drivers, of safety training that they-
And I think that that's extremely useful and resourceful for us to have those trainings. I know Commissioner Uranda brought up a concern that he had in regards to there being certain employees within the county, whether they be elected officials or employees, that have had constant or repeated car accidents, to the point where we've been in a lawsuit or currently are being sued. And where's the accountability? Mr. Pruski, Mr. Rodriguez advised the court that there's a point system that can be had. So I think there's still a lot of room for discussion in terms of this particular policy. I don't think that there has to be any appropriate action to be taken today. I understand your position about having classes and taking courses, and I think that that's something that we can do and get with Mr. Pruski and Mr. Rodriguez, and have them send a schedule of trainings that they could have, and we, I can distribute that to the commissioners and to the other elected officials. And if it's mandated by law, then we have to have it mandated by law and put it out there so that we can set up dates. I don't think scheduling dates needs to be approved by Commissioners Court in general.
Judge?
I have my hand.
Okay, well, she had her hand raised first, so-
Yes, before we move on, because we're on topic, so I kind of raise my hand when I want to stop. I don't know, I just feel like it's going to work better like that for me. The question that I have, and I can understand that we're going to go back and we're going to have a private meeting to discuss other things, but before we move forward, what I want to know is, do we get an insurance break, or is there anything, do y'all guys cover these classes that-
Hold on, I can go forward.
So like, good morning, Sergeant.
Good morning.
So that you're going to do the insurance classes, and how does insurance classes start us? Do we get insurance breaks, or any type of credit, or?
Like incentives, you mean, do we get incentives?
And is that something that we have to pay y'all through the insurance, or is that something that comes with the package of y'all?
I can, I can answer, and then Mr. Pruski can answer. As far as getting insurance breaks, he handles that, he'll, he'll notice incentives to do that. As far as other side, what drives insurance premiums are claims. And what my job is to reduce the cost of your claims, to be able to either have some type of incentive where you can reduce your cost, or at least stay where you're at now, so the claims are not considered a rise. You know, from, you know, history says, you know, there's, insurance claims are all driven, 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 the higher that you go up, the counties can't afford to do that, we have to either let go of employees, or let go of people be able to handle your insurance claims. So we're here to provide a service through the trident insurance to do that, and that's at no cost to Dimen County.
All right. And then, because I knew that she says that-
The terminology on the policy, we'll just go back to the drawing table and ascertain that it's done the proper way. Previous to my tenure here as a county judge, Mr. Frank Ponse would go and take the documents to Donato Ramos, who was the attorney that he would use, and they'd get the paperwork documentations, and then he'd get with Mr. Pereira, and he'd get with Tannis, which was the other HR, and bring it back to Commissioners Court, and then he would advise that this was the recommendation that he was doing to the court. And so, you know, kind of trying to mirror that as well, and putting that back on the policy, because I- I would think so, I mean, I don't know about you gentlemen, Ms. Commissioner Dubokawa, if it's ever really been practiced to do pre-employment drug testing. I mean, I don't, I've never seen it done correct.
I've been here 10 years and we've never done it.
Exactly, and, exactly, and so, to me, the fact that, I mean, and I know Commissioner Dubokawa was talking on her behalf, but from what I've seen in the two years, and I've had discussions with other electeds and other department heads, I don't think it's ever been, there's been a pre-drug testing employment.
No.
So obviously, we're not adhering to that, and it, and the legal lingo, it says that it's, it's a requirement, so we haven't even been followed up.
The last time that, that my employees, if my employees, I kept everybody coming in, they said that in the past month, that was the first time that it was ever required of them in all the years that they've been working there. So it's not a policy that's enforced, and that's just going on their word of mouth. And then I have one more question for you, because when I first came in, I did, I connected a safety meeting, and I chose three practices that I wanted to make sure that all my employees were aware of, and I just wanted to see if this is something of what y'all guys are going to be doing. So the first one was stop work authority.
What was that?
Stop work authority. So stop work authority just means that if you're in an unsafe situation, you stop work, everybody has the power to stop the work on the job site, and then a supervisor or assistant supervisor will have to come, people have to be done before they resume their daily work duties.
We can, that one we can discuss later?
I want to ask them if-
Because right now, we're just trying to get information of what's going on, so if you can contact the insurance, Mr. Pruski, and let him know that those are, those are your concerns.
Okay.
Because right now, what we're just trying to do is-
What I'm trying to figure out is what they offer.
Ma'am, hold on, I got the phone.
Yeah, I'm trying to explain to you the question.
Hold on one second. The thing is that right now, we're just discussing the policy. Again, if you've got ideas, then you can refer them over to, to Mr. Pruski and Mr., I'm sorry, for a minute. So that, those ideas, they can bring us back up when we come up to the discussion.
Okay, so I just had a question, I wanted to make sure that that was along the lines of that they were doing, so if it wasn't something that they covered, then we can outsource it. Remember, Judge, I had asked you if that was something that we can get, overturning the safety, I mean, and do safety. So I wanted to make sure that these were some of the things that they also did, so they could-
Right, but you're bringing in another company examples, so on that-
No, I'm not bringing in another company example.
Well, you mentioned the company that you contacted.
To see if I can just outsource.
Right, but at that time, you can bring it up to, and at different times, you can bring it up to them. Right now, we're just discussing the county.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that these were some of the things that they took care of as well, so if it wasn't, then I can be brought there with my department and my area to see if I can do something else, because this is something that I want to be done monthly. So if it's not something that's appropriate to discuss with them, I just wanted to know like, if that's something y'all guys can do, or do I need to-
I can, I can schedule a meeting with you, and I can visit with you-
I would appreciate that.
And that way, we can see what your concerns are, and we can put that as a part of our training.
Judge, I have one, one question. On our first responders, they say they're not county employees.
They're not county employees?
Yes, they're, they're a fireman. Now, the question is, there's nothing here that says for any volunteer firefighter, if so happens we get in an accident, or this is going to state that now I might have to take them for a drug test. That's one of the concerns that I have, because it's mentioned by Mr. Pereira that they're not county employees, but yet, again, they're volunteering their time and driving county property, and where do we stand on that?
Wasn't that something I need to discuss?
Well, no, 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 but this has to do right now with the county policy, because-
That I thought we were going to reword the county policy.
Well, ma'am, you don't understand that the volunteers are not-
I'm trying to understand.
On the policy, so I'm trying to correct it, when the policy states emergency response is there?
So just to answer, just to answer your question, like for homework for us, the answer to your question is, any volunteer employee that's authorized to drive a motor vehicle at that time, covered under the county's insurance. Now, can he be tested under your policy? As your policy reads, there's nowhere in it that says he can be tested, however, we assume, but you know, the judge-
Well, I'm a tester.
Yeah, the judge, it says, well, that's just, it's not in the policy, you can't, you know, do that. So we'll get, we'll get that as homework also.
It's just a question that goes with the county policy, so-
We're going to calm down.
It's not the sheriff or anybody, if you-
No, I know it's not the sheriff, so whoever's yelling order in the court back there, please don't, I'll, I'll let you know when to yell order in the court. Because yes, you're absolutely correct, I am the chief officer of the court, Commissioners Court, and I will have the decorum of the court in place for anybody present in Commissioners Court. And so, we are going to keep in line with Commissioners Court at this moment, and I do ask that we keep our tone down.
And vogue.
And vogue. And Commissioner Uranda, go ahead.
The only reason I was asking that particular question is to protect the court from singling somebody out, or somebody accusing us of singling somebody out. No, this has been done in the past, I've seen it happen.
What, what question are you asking?
About random, about random drug test.
Me, for example, calling one of my employees and saying, I feel that you need to go and take a drug test, for whatever reason it may be, and you're important, especially if he goes and performs a drug test and he comes out clean, and tries to accuse me of singling you out, because it can happen. And I, I know in the past, the best practice is usually computer randoms, because you can't accuse a computer of things that it, it shoots out, so that's why I was asking, just to protect us as elected officials or supervisors.
And just for the record, I tested myself, led by example, so.
Say that, I didn't hear what you said.
I tested myself.
Oh, you tested yourself?
Yes.
Why, you didn't test yourself, but they tested you?
Oh, well, reworded, they tested me, I didn't test myself.
So for, you know, for homework, what I've got here, that will check, I'll meet with you on training, for stop work authority, we'll check on the reality, you know, random training, and we will come back and visit with the judge and commissioners and present something that is not a policy of Dimen County, but is protected by the state and what the insurance company requires for you to accomplish.
I would, I would respectfully request, Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. Pruski, if we can sit down and have that, like I said, conversation, so that we can have a policy, like I said, that adheres not only with local and state law, but that is going to be very clear as to what can and cannot be done, and just taking into consideration all the notes that were, and concerns that were given today, and we can sit down, advise my office when's a good time for you and Mr. Pruski to sit down with me and Mr. Pereira and Mr. Ortiz, so that we can have a definite answer, and that we can bring back to Commissioners Court, so that we can't accept a policy that will hold muster, obviously, under the law. We don't want to be caught in any kind of lawsuit or liability for failure to follow the state law and doing things that we're not supposed to. And I think it's always important, and Mr. Pruski knows this, that, you know, the better that Dimen County does in terms of decreasing the claims we have, the better it is for our insurance policy and, and how much we pay. So it's always good for us to have a low claim, and that's to include whether it's for drugs, or whether it's to include car accidents. So I want to make sure that we continue to work on it. I am pleased to advise our constituents and everyone here, as Mr. Pruski mentioned, Mr. Rodriguez mentioned, our claims are low, they're not increasingly high, but we want to go ahead and keep them low. And I think it's always pertinent, I think it's always important that we keep abreast of safety measures and to appease to Commissioner Dalmat, and continue to have those trainings that we need to have, because not only does it help for, for the person, the individual that's working for the county, but also for our claims, so we can get together and look at that terminology, and we also get with TAC, and like I said, follow the local state laws. Thank you so much.
Commissioner, I will email you to see your call your office, it sounds like a good time to go.
Hi, you know, it's Jake Dalmat, thank you so much for coming down, I really do appreciate it.
I am going to motion at this time to table this item. Do I have, I have a second, Commissioner Dubokawa? I motion, you have a second. I motion to, to table this item, Ms. McDaniel, I have a second by Commissioner Dubokawa. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.3, discussion of appropriate action, approval to reschedule date, times, and court care for in-depth athlete, in-depth athlete.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Ramírez.
I've heard an update about the open gym that I host since, our last discussion was in May 6th at Commissioners Court. I utilize the gym twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays for this open gym. The community has constantly, consistently been using this time to play, learn, and work on their volleyball skills. This is a volleyball open gym. The youth time was best utilized these past two months of November and December, with an approximate average of 13 youth, while the, while the smallest average being four youth athletes in the months of May and June. The youth time has grown since the beginning and has been utilized more, more often recently this past January. The adults, the adults' time has stayed consistent all year round, with the best days consisting with approximate average of 24 people playing each day, with the highest number of people in one day being 30, while the lowest days being an approximate average of 13 people, with the lowest being eight since May. One discussion I wanted to go over was gym care. With, with more youth and adults constantly growing in numbers, as the time goes on, we have come across some issues with the floor grip, the floor being too slippery. This makes it hard to jump, land, move, and play without worrying about hurting ourselves. I care to discuss some solutions that will hopefully better this problem. I heard from the community that the rec center in Big Wheels has better grip than the Ashton gym. I also see that the lines of the gym floor were being repainted in Asherton, but never finished, and have been unfinished for a while. I really appreciate the opportunity you all have given me to bring this to the community this past May and these last months. I'm hoping for discussion and questions about this open gym. This is, this is just an update of how many people show up and the problems that we have came up.
So I have a, go ahead, give me one second, Commissioner. I want to clarify real quick, Mr. Ramírez, your request to reschedule date, times, and court care, I understand, you're talking about the court care, which is what you just discussed right now, but in regards to reschedule date and times, I'm trying to get clarification.
Yes, on paper, I was, my time was done, but we continued using it, because we were allowed, or I was told that I was able to continue on, until I finally got information to come out, what information I was supposed to bring here today. And now that I have the information, as Valerie explained me what information to bring, I was able to come here and get a reschedule through Jazz to get an approval.
Are the grip, that's something that's important, Commissioner?
Mr. Pruski bought some, like, epoxy, I don't know if that's his-
Spray.
Uh-huh, well, he bought the whole gallon.
Oh, so, oh, oh.
But that's what he was going to use, because that's what we did it the last time.
How often?
That one was done, he was doing it every six months.
Every six months?
Uh-huh. I know with winter, you can use it, it would get sticky, so it has to be, it's hot to do it, yeah.
So my recommendation to the court would be to, obviously, with the blessing of Commissioner Dubokawa, as that is in her precinct, she's advised that she has no concern, correct? If I'm wrong, Commissioner Dubokawa, that she has no concern or issue with allowing you to continue to use it Tuesdays and Thursdays from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. However, and like we made it clear to you last time, Mr. Ramírez, we do want you to understand that at any time in which an event is to be had at that location, that there's payments to be made, for instance, a baby shower or a bingo or whatnot, that takes precedence over your time- over your time there. So, just to clarify that to you, and my recommendation to this court would be to continue to allow in-debt athlete to continue to use the facilities from 6:00 to 9:00, Tuesdays and Thursdays, with the subject to if there's any other events going on that are paid or for profit for a term of six months, Ms. Commissioner Noguera? A term of six months, you're okay with that?
We had done three months, we were doing three months because of the youth basketball.
Correct, at that time.
At that time, so basketball started again, so...
So, since we're in January, I would, I would say for you, if you needed to continue to use it, come back to Commissioners' Court in July, so you'd be able to utilize it for the next, for the six months, is what this agreement would be, with your final six months. Of course, we'll, I'll get a motion right off from somebody, but to allow you to use it for six months, and for any other future issues that you may have with actual care or the facility in terms of lights or the gym or whatever you may have, just out of respect for the commissioners on this court, I would suggest for you to reach out to Commissioner Noguera, just following the chain of command, reach out to her first, and obviously, if you don't get any answers or any response, then I would suggest to put it back on Commissioners' Court.
Can I apologize?
No, you don't have to apologize, I think that it's a good thing, we...
Correct. I had to Jasmine call me, and I told Jasmine, because let him wait the three months, because there's no basketball.
No, I...
At the time, so I said, next three months, he can come back and we'll approve it in Commissioners' Court.
Yeah, don't apologize, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, Commissioner Noguera, I don't think we're trying to step on her toes, I'm just saying, but I think it's important for transparency purposes that we're all held accountable, and if we're being called and upon and requested to fix certain things and they're not being fixed, then at that point, I think it's very feasible that you come before Commissioners' Court and request it. So, don't apologize, there's no need to apologize for anything.
So, do we go 6:00 to 9:00?
Yes, ma'am.
Or 9:00?
And if they get interrupted over there, like they said, we do have a few kids that go out there, but our faith is in areas, a bunch of the other people over there, so I'm pretty sure that there's a lot of kids in my area too that would benefit from the services that you offer, so if you're ever up for the drive out there to less than 20 miles, we'll be glad to have you as well.
Just keep, make sure, to piggyback off of you, Commissioner, just make sure that you guys get with Jasmine, so that there won't be, like, multiple people. It's just for, Jasmine, just so we have uniformity, and there's a constant. I have a motion by Commissioner Noguera.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.5, thank you, Mr. Ramírez, have a good day. 3.4, Approval to Use the Old Fairgrounds to Hold a Blood Drive. Is there anybody here from... Hi, Mr. Garcia.
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
Yes, we're asking you to use the old county fairground, March 8.
You just want the fairgrounds, or you also want the pavilion?
Just the, where the awnings at?
Pavilion.
So, the pavilion.
What day was that, sir?
March 8, I believe it was a Saturday.
For the record, Judge, I'll pay the $50 fee to be used.
It's either 50 or we can make the...
Commissioner, just say.
Commissioner Noguera will pay the $50 fee to use the facilities. And that's for March 8, Mr. Garcia?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll second the motion.
I have Commissioner Noguera motioned, and second by Commissioner Jose Urenda. We'll follow up on that, Commissioner, if there isn't. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Garcia, it's been approved, thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
3.5, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from County Extension Agent, Ms. Alyssa Cruz, I was gonna say, Ms. Alyssa Ramírez.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners, and welcome, Commissioner Dona Montes. Good morning.
So, for the record, Ms. Cruz, my dress has some green in it, because I was scorned, I wouldn't say attacked, attacked, but I was scorned this morning when I came into work, that we are, and just so the, I mean, Ms. Cruz will let the court, let the community know, but just so the community knows and the individuals that are here, it's stock show week for Dimmitt County, for the youth of Dimmitt County, and so, there, today we're asked, the community was asked to wear green in honor of the kickoff to the stock show for 4H, and I think tomorrow is to honor FFA, correct? So, it's wear blue and gold, or just blue?
Blue.
Blue and gold. So, I just wanted to say that there's some green in here, Ms. Cruz. Go ahead.
I'll record in front of y'all. We did, myself along with a few other counties, hosted the Texas, the county, the Rio County this past December. On the 4H side, we did host our cross show fundraiser, it was a great success, we had over 200 livestock entries come out, come out over here to show their animals. We also completed rabbit validation, and I hosted a rabbit clinic for the youth. And then we also hosted our 4H community service, which was donation to the Whispering Springs Healthcare Center here. And then in front of you for this coming month, like the judge mentioned, we have our county livestock show that'll take place from the end of this week. On Wednesday, the Dimmitt County Junior Livestock Association, along with Sheriff Asamiaga and Commissioner Urenda, will be hosting a breakfast from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and that's open to the community. On Friday, we will have our 4H barbecue plate sale, that'll be happening from 11:00 to 1:00, so if you know the 4H member, or you want to come that day to buy a plate, you can do that as well. On the 4H side, also, we will be hosting our live silent auction, this will be in-person, they're at the arena during the time of the show, starting Thursday, ending on Saturday.
Ending when?
On Saturday. Thursday to Saturday. Then I have included a flyer of the Second Annual Winter Rabbit Grow-up Conference, that is also a multi-county program effort, and that will be hosted in Hondo, Texas on January 27.
Any questions of Ms. Cruz?
So, y'all don't have no colors for the week, so we can be aware.
Tomorrow is blue, put attention.
I'm asking for a reason, because it's Friday.
He doesn't want to wear blue, because it's a Dallas Cowboys, but we'll put him from blue to from head to toe.
No, but I would agree, like, there's no color for the rest of the week.
There's no red, Commissioner, at all, all week. No, seriously, I was serious, what is Wednesday?
Western Wednesday.
Western Wednesday, you can wear a red snap button-up shirt, and then Thursday?
Favorite animal.
I think it's a...
All favorite animal.
Thursday's your favorite animal, and Friday?
It was a Friday.
Sorry.
Is this cool to be back? Yes.
Well, for favorite animal, I guess we can all ask Commissioner Noguera for her blowups, because she has a bunch of them, right, Commissioner?
It would be funny for all of us to dress up.
I think, do you have a cow, and what else?
A gorilla.
A chicken. A what? She has a mom.
Ms. Cruz, I want to applaud you for your hard work, you did this by the horns, you do the Mason Jones. Also, I'd like to thank Mr. Urenda and Sheriff for hosting the drug test for the kids in the community.
We want to have everybody out there, we're possible, we need tacos and coffee.
Any other questions of Ms. Cruz? I will entertain a motion to approve her, motion by Commissioner Noguera, I have a second by Commissioner Dona Montes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Cruz.
Thank you.
3.6, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from FCH Agent, Ms. Clarissa Munoz, for the month of December.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that's a flyer that I just handed to you for our next upcoming Cooking Well for Healthy Blood Pressure class, that's gonna be in Bigwells at the Recreation Center, and I believe it starts February 4. It's our first, well, my first class in Bigwells, so I'm pretty excited, I'm gonna try to hit up Bigwells in Asherton, because a lot of stuff I've done has been recruited, so trying to expand this year.
Awesome.
In December, my colleague, the BLT agent, Julieta Leja, and I had a nutrition bingo at the Nutrition Center, and we had about 19 participants, and it was a hit, they liked it, even though it was, it was Loteria Notrisonal, if I said that correctly, and it was a little bit different, they weren't used to it, but they really liked it, but they want to come do it again, so I'll get excited about it.
Any questions of Ms. Munoz?
Thank you, Ms. Moniz, for everything you do.
Ms. Munoz, I do also want to commend you for your zealousness, if you will, in our community, I think it's important that we continue to educate our constituents regarding health and how it's associated with our eating decisions and how we do things. I was privileged to attend one of your trainings that you had here in Carrizo for diabetes, and it was very informative, and there was, she had a good crowd, and I urge everyone to go out there and attend these trainings that Ms. Munoz is having, not only will you be educated in the terminology and the language...
Telling the citizens that rent the fire station not to take cash, but I don't seem to get, like, sometimes any word, but I send them directly to you, I just do the contract, but I don't know how else we can get across, or...
I try to do only money order or check.
Well, that's what I've been telling them, I don't know if you should use the card.
I think they can pay online with credit card, correct?
Yeah, they could pay online.
Because I'm, we're asking about using the card, I said that, I don't know.
There's been times that they're a little bit older, they don't come, they don't know how to use their computer, so I'll take their card and I'll do it, and I'll print their receipt out and I'll send it to them.
But I do state to them, and I know, no, plus cash is more easy, but you can, you know, but I'm trying to get the word out there.
Ms. Ramírez, can you make sure for future reference that you change it on here to Ms. Jasmine Boone? Thank you.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Carmona. Second by Commissioner Dona Montes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
I have a question for Jasmine.
Go ahead.
Jasmine, do you have the golf course here, the conference room where you rented?
I don't do the golf course.
You don't do the golf course?
No.
Ms. Hyman does the golf course, the renting? I think you're in charge of the renting.
No.
All the renting. Ms. Hyman does the renting?
Ms. Hyman does the renting.
So, it'll be her report?
It'll be her report.
Ms. Boone. 3.8, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from Dimmitt County Golf Course for the month of December 2024. Good morning, Ms. Hyman.
Is your rent report in this too?
Yes, ma'am. It should be the last page, but I, and I attached no cells for the month of December.
If the month of December, there was no rentals?
There was no rentals. Not for party sake, you know, like, the little party room that we have, you know, for the, that sort.
Was it used like for the gloves?
No.
Is that, this feature here, it says no cells?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions?
Motion, Judge.
I have a motion by Commissioner Alonso.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.9, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Monthly Report from Precinct 2, Mr. Andres Aravola, Joey Rivera, for the month of December 2024.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
For the record, Mr. My reserve, Joey Rivera, was not available for the foreseeable feature. He's battling kidney disease, so thank you, Ms. Noguera, for paying for the blood drive, I'll benefit him and other people with battling diseases like that. Thank you.
Yes, that's nothing like any snacks or anything like that, I'm pretty sure this will work and come together.
That's Mr. Rivera's, he's gonna be in charge of that.
Yeah, so the gentleman that was here in the court, if you want to reach out to him, he's the one, he's just advising the court, because Ms. Rivera was one of Constable Aravola's reserve deputies, but Mr. Rivera's wife has reached out to me and I can give her contact if you want, or if not, any of the gentlemen from the Motorcycle Club that can help or assist, or even Ms. Miranda.
South Texas Hero Reserve, a hundred of them that are helping also.
Are there any questions of Constable? I have a motion by Commissioner Noguera.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.10, Monthly Report from Constable Precinct 3, Mr. Robert Valderas and Joventino Torres for the month of December 2024.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
I want to thank you for helping us with the Christmas car and, I know we have to turn out, and we always enjoy doing the sign from our official titles, but thank you so much for going out there and helping us out there.
You had a great time.
Judge, also, we made Mr. Valderas and his Constable honorary firefighters, so we landed a truck, so they could use in Bigwells that month, or near the...
For New Year's Eve.
He saved us a lot of time, and responds, where relatives couldn't lose their houses or whatever, or whatever they know, we loaned them a small rented truck, they were out there responding to our calls. We were underway, but then he would call us and we were canceled, but we did lend Constable...
Thank you, Alonso, I appreciate that, I really do.
Yes, well, thank you, Ms. Hyman.
That's teamwork. Any questions, Commissioner? Any questions? Commissioner Dubucava?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Talamontes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have the monthly report for the month of December from Constable. At the time, Mr. Galván, it is on here for your records. Give me one second. This thing is on board. I apologize. It should be, 3.11 is a Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report for the Constable Precinct 1, Mr. Rudy López. However, Mr. López was not sworn under oath for Constable until January 1. Thank you, Dob, nonetheless, for being here. We should have a report from we should have a report from the ex-Constable. We don't, but I appreciate your presence here today. I appreciate your presence here today, Mr. López. And there will be no action taken on 3.11 because I don't have a report to present to the court. We will gladly take your report for the next one, Mr. López. Thank you. 3.12 Discussion and Appropriate Action Monthly Report from Constable Precinct 4. I will amend that it should reflect for it to say the report from Mr. Vosseris. 3.15 Discussion and Appropriate Action Approval for County Judge Mastaponce, Commissioners José Uranda, Valerio Dubucava, Olisa Talamontes, County Auditor Carlos Pareda, County Treasurer Ortiz, County Attorney Claudia McDaniel, JP Precinct 1, Sonia Guedelopérez, Sheriff Chris Castaneda, Chief Luceniseros, Constables Robert Valderas, Rudy López, Manuel Rosas, to attend the counties at the Capitol Legislative Date on January 28th in Austin, Texas.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Judge, I called you. I got something planned for that day. Last time I got notified, I had already said I'm meeting with someone else.
Okay, thank you, sir. 3.16 Discussion and Appropriate Action to Rescind the Motion of Approval for Use of the Petri Building, Precinct 1.
Judge, I asked if we could put this on the agenda. First of all, I'd like to respectfully ask the court that if this item does carry on into discussion, that we may attempt to keep this discussion professional, respectful, and perhaps come up to a positive agreement that would benefit our, that would properly benefit our constituents and the needs for our county. Based on the unclearness of exactly what the building is going to be allocated for at this point, my motion at the time is to rescind the previous motion of approval for the use of Petri Building and allow the court to follow into discussion and allow the use of this as voted upon.
So your recommendation is to be utilized by whom?
My recommendation is to be utilized by the personnel that we initially had discussed about purchases of the building, which is the Auditor's Office and the Treasurer's Office. And perhaps, as Commissioner Dubucava mentioned in one of the previous meetings, allow her to utilize, to have an office for her as well.
Judge, I think we've been coming back and forth with this item. Last Commissioner's Court and the previous Commissioner's Court, it has been approved to be used for Precinct 4, Commissioner Dubucava and our Constable, Mr. Rosas. I know Mr. Martínez, when he was here, he mentioned he didn't want to move. We agreed on purchasing it for these offices for our secretary, which is my secretary, was not my secretary, but Ms. Maribel, Miranda, to house her for commodities and sanitation.
Judge, I agree on the same purpose. I mean, this, this.
So that's for, give me one second, for three. For three, one other days. So for three, you want the office for three individuals, you said?
It was, we needed five offices. That's what we've been back and forth. And this, that's what we had agreed on, and that's what was approved in the last previous Commissioner's Court, which is my office, commodities, sanitation, Mr. Rosas, our Constable, and an extra office for Mr. Rosas when he gets another employee. Just like every other Constable, they have their employees. They have one or two divisions under them.
Judge, on that, I agree. I also want to see if we can move Precinct, Ms. Boon.
No, I'm just going to inform you that the camera's overheating, so if you want to, I don't know if you want to get some in it, or if you have a camera going. It's because I answered my goal, my text, and I know I'm supposed to be on it, but it's because he was informing me that it's overheating.
Yeah, I just didn't want to interrupt it, but it's overheating. It's probably going to turn off in a second right now. I don't have a spare battery, so I can't change it out, and it's currently on low. I charge it all night, but it didn't stay charged.
She want to run and get one and come back, or you can continue? Okay.
Sorry about that.
The record is.
Okay.
I agree. I was thinking of moving our, the secretary, that is for the Commissioners because because if you look at it really.
No.
He say that she wants, she wants to move over there.
No.
Well, the reason why, I don't have an office. If you walk into the fire station, it doesn't say Dimon County Secretary. It says Dimon County Precinct 2, Commissioner's Office. How are you utilizing the fire chief's office and the Commissioners in one? So they just say for some reason, either the fire chief position comes available or as a new Commissioner, where is a new Commissioner going to go? Because that is my office and I understand it, she's the employee of Commissioner Talamontes. But I really don't have an office to set up with people. And the reason I loaned it to them and Commissioner Dubucava is aware was because temporarily, well, we didn't have an office for them and having her in Biggles was going to be her coming and going. I was moving, I was hoping to move Flo into that building also. Being again, that I don't have an office. If you go to the fire station again, once again, and you look at that door, it says the office of Dimon County Commissioner.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why hasn't ever been a.
Because we never had a building. Okay, that's contained.
Turn and body, take a back piece, turn and.
Okay, I mean, but we never had a building, and that's the way. And the reason that it was loaned out to the.
Could you put your hand up in my face again?
Oh, I'm just doing this?
Don't do that. Don't do that. It's not necessary.
It's my hand gesture.
Aye.
What? And you talk.
Can we get back and forth on it, please?
I'm just like.
Go ahead, finish your.
I use my hand gesture. If I wanted to hit him on with any. Well, I'm telling you, you're being disrespectful. You know, I already told you several times that you're one of those persons that, which you watch. But it's, no, sir, I stand by my. But what I was trying to tell you is that I don't have an office. If some reason the Commissioner comes in or fire chief, when are they going to be housed?
Constable, available, and Commissioner Dubucava wants to move in there, we can do whatever we need to paint walls, whatever we need to do until her building is constructed. I mean, that's, we keep moving people around to justify, and I don't think that that's even the right thing to do. It's not fair to the people that are already stationed and are working out of their station just because we want to allocate the square footage. It's 3,243 square feet. Okay, for the, if you have a full building full of people, it makes sense to cool and heat every, every year, or all year. But for three or four people, our job as a Commissioner, our job as a Constable, realistically is basically going out and being out of the field. Not all the time, but compared to the auditors and the treasurers, they're behind their desk a lot more than we are. So that's why I called it, and I feel like it's the proper thing to do at this time. It's not about moving Flo, moving Dob. It's not necessary. It's not necessary. We never had to do it. Why are we having to do it now?
You know, add a building.
Okay, so just for the record and for the people to understand, is Commissioner Juan Carmona did call me before I was appointed to office because there was one day that I was sitting over there and he said to move Flo. I kept all my employees. Y'all guys can go ask. Everybody was utilized. I gave everybody that was there the opportunity to increase their hours, move people around. I didn't feel like it was best to bring in anybody and try to care house as so they speak. My thing is that I'm evaluating every employee that I have. So how can I safely evaluate my secretary and then move her in that process? And then what if her standards of work aren't where I need them to be? She's always going to be able to use that excuse to say, oh, will you move me prematurely? I have it like this for whatever reason. I never once said that Flo would never move over there. If I wanted to, I can move Flo to Biggles if I really didn't want to, but again, to keep her here because we all three use her, I felt like it was best to keep her here. Me and Valerio were understanding with it. We had a conversation, and I felt like we were in clear that, you know, as of right now, that was my answer. It doesn't even need to be an agenda item because she's my employee, and the answer, Ms. Carmona, is no, I'm not moving her.
And we don't seem to understand.
Ms. Miranda, I don't know what the problem or what the issue is because we've been back and forth at it for four times already. This is the fourth time.
Did he mention the school?
We said it was my office, my office and Mr. the new Constable to house us, five, five offices. When I spoke to Mr. Pareda, I told him, I said, you can get whatever offices you want. We need five offices. That's what we're getting, five offices. I don't know how it became the issue now, all of a sudden, the parking lot, because it has never been an issue. So all of a sudden, it became an issue, the parking lot. We already purchased this building. We already said it in Commissioner's Court three times, two times, three times, what it was being used for, who's going to be housed in there. I mean, there's space. Whoever wants to move, I don't care who moves in there. We just need five offices.
So you're just requesting five. You don't care what happens with the rest?
What happens with the rest, like I said before, we need five offices. I think right now Commissioner Dubucava looking at it back and forth, back and forth.
I think, I think realistically speaking or practically speaking, I think there needs to be, at the minimum, if we're going to try to bring in HR over here and Mr. Pareda's office, at the minimum, you need three offices, one for you, one for Maribel, and one for Mr. Rosas.
If we're, if we're going to do it that way, we're getting the biggest, the bigger offices because we need all that space. That's what we said, five offices. That's what we were getting.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying, at the minimum, you need three offices, one for Maribel. Because Maribel technically is both sanitation and commodities, so that's one person, so that's one office. And then you have your office as the Commissioner.
And then Mr. Rosas.
And then Rosas needs one off, he needs one office, yes. And, and just for logistical purposes, unless the other Constables left already, the ones that have deputy reserves, I don't know, I don't know this because I don't think I've seen it, but if I'm not mistaken, for those other Constables, none of their deputy reserves have offices, so technically, we would need an office for Constable Rosas. So that would be a total of three offices that you need for sure.
There's a conference room and a lounge room, well, you can use that for a conference room and a lounge room, and then whatever's left.
So, so if there's officially according, according, because when I went to go look at the building, that was when we were first in the.
It was nine offices.
In the.
In the lounge, in the conference room.
So there's a total of ten spaces. There's ten spaces there. There's ten spaces there to be had because the little kitchenette area is separate, the kitchenette. So there's a total of ten spaces to be had, so there's, subtract that, there's seven offices left over, seven spaces left over. This is not to include that building in the back, correct?
That's the storage room.
There's, there's a building in the back. Well, I mean, you could utilize it. You could utilize it as, you could utilize it for offices if Mr. Pareda wanted to put people in there or Mr. Ortiz. I'm just trying to find the best solution so that we could move. Or if that's what Commissioner Uranda's recommending, his recommendation is, is to move the HR office. And.
I have a question. The building in Asherton's not going to be constructed?
It hasn't been constructed in ten years?
No, that's right. I didn't know, but.
So all of a sudden, now it wants to be constructed?
Well, the only reason I'm asking, it was approved back in 2021 to move forward with the building in Asherton.
And the lowest, the highest bidder was 1.2 million, and what did we say? No?
Nope.
And it never came back?
But it came back through Commissioner's Court, and it was, it was denied?
It was denied.
Because I couldn't find any minutes where it was denied. The only thing I found was.
No. It was 1.2, 1.2 million, 1.7, 1.7 million. It was for the, for the building. I have a question.
Okay, give me one second. Hold on.
I couldn't.
I found the minutes.
Where it was shut down?
It wasn't shut down, but it was never brought back. Can I see that, Commissioner? 1.7. The building, and it was never built.
So it was approved in 2021, it was approved in 2021 to build a building in Asherton. And there's four different bidders with the lowest bidder being 1.4 million and the highest being 1.7 million. And it says here.
What's the date that come after?
August 19th, 2021.
I have August 23rd, 2021.
So that's the next Commissioner's Court. Can I see that?
I made the motion. The only one that voted for Commissioner Dubucava, one, is Precinct 1.
So in August 19th, 2029, the bids were open to approve for the construction of the building in Asherton for a JP Center. And then, two weeks later, at the next Commissioner's Court, it was approved to award the bid to the lowest bidder, so it would be 1.4 million at that time.
So it was approved.
It was approved to be built.
And it was never built on October?
On August 23rd, 2021. It was approved to be built, August 2021. That's before my year type.
Yes.
And it was a back and forth issue?
My motion is we move. If it ever gets built, then we move out. That's my motion.
Well, I, I understand that motion, Commissioner Dubucava, but I also think that for purposes of efficiency and, and how that building is going to be used, practically speaking, I think it's, we can house the HR office there and/or the auditor's office there as well. Because I think to me, it's not resourceful for us to have just three offices being utilized in that building. So I think that practically speaking, and to be efficient, it would be a sound decision for all of us to make for us to have the auditor's office. How many, how many staff members do you have? Five. And Mr. Ortiz? Eight. So I think there's sufficient space there to house both HR and auditor's office as well as Constable Rosas, Ms. Miranda, and yourself, Commissioner Dubucava, out of that office space so that we actually have just decision to our constituents how we're using that building instead of saying we're going to be paying utilities on that building for just three individuals. So I would strongly suggest and recommend that we, the motion be for the auditor, the HR office in conjunction with Constable Rosas, yourself, Commissioner Dubucava. HR office, in conjunction with Constable Rosas, yourself, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala, and your sanitation commodities, um, staff member, Ms. Miranda, to be housed in that facility. And, um, give Commissioner Núñez-Cavala and Constable Rosas the, um, seniority, if you will, to designate which office they want, for it to be obviously the biggest office, if you will, um, and to work together in how to utilize that back room, um, that was historically used for, for, um, the storage of files for the Petri Building. I know when I went to go look at the building with the Realtor, Ms. Ramirez, it was her recommendation at the time that it could be used, and Mr. Pereira went with me at the time as auditor, because he's the one that is the money man. Um, and I think that's where that notion came about, was that she recommended, recommended, excuse me, that that back building could also be utilized for offices. Obviously, it does not have to be used for offices. It can continue to be used for, excuse me, for storage space. But I think that, um, a sound decision in terms of how we're gonna utilize that space, I think it would be, um, the most feasible to have the auditor, the HR office there, as well as, um, yourself, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala, Constable Rosas, and Maribel. And I am, I would be more than happy to sit down with you, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala, so that we can move forward in, um, working on architectural plans, if you would like to get your, um, I don't wanna say just yours, but because obviously, the way it's written on the agenda is to get the JP office and your office built, um, in Asherton. I know we also have the, the elementary, and you and I have had some discussion regarding the elementary. If you do not wanna utilize the elementary to build an office there for you or JP Martinez, that's fine. Um, it's on the record. They gotta approve for you to have a building. Why, four years later, your building never got built? I don't know, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala. And I'm not gonna sit here and, um, assume or speculate as to why the building wasn't built for you. I apologize to you, and I apologize more importantly to the constituents of four, five, and seven, because that building should have been built. And honestly, and you know this very well, because we, part of being a public servant is, you know, we get attacked on social media, and you and I both know that there has been, um, discussion out there on social media, and off the record as well, of many people upset because Mr. Martinez doesn't have a, a building. And you, and you know that, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala. Why is everybody getting buildings except Judge Beef Martinez? And now that I see Commissioner Renna's, uh, agenda that he pulled up, and yours that you pulled up, that it was approved five years ago, I wanna make it very clear to the constituents of Asherton specifically that there was a building that was approved for JP Martinez, for you. And I, I don't know what, I don't know the details of it, but perhaps one for Mr. Calvano at the time. And if that was the case, it should have been built, because quite frankly, I can almost tell you right now, looking at how much we're doing with the sports complex, that 1.4, it's probably gonna have either doubled, and you know that.
That's gonna be high.
It's gonna be very high. And, um, you know.
That's why I took the initiative to say, okay, $400,000, we're gonna build Petri, that can be our office, because it has never been built. It was 1.4, the highest was 1.7. I said, "It's never gonna get done." It never did get done. So I said, "Might as well buy this building for us, and whoever else wants to be moved in, I don't have a problem," just like I said to Pereira the other day. He said, "I don't have a problem." I, I mean, I'm glad Teresa, Ms. Talamantes, went to my office to see, because I told her, I said, "Nobody wants to be in my office in 10 years." I'm glad you came to see my office, to see where I'm at.
And I, and.
And discuss this. I talked about it, and I said, "I don't have a problem. Once it's built, I don't have a problem. We can move. We can get out, get our new office. That'll be awesome." But for now, I said, "This is what we need."
No, I, I agree, and 100%, I, I agree, and I very much think that you should be housed there in the, in the meantime, until you get a building built, because I, I only think that it is fair. It is fair, and I, I can't sit here and blame the people that get on Facebook or Instagram, Twitter, or whatever.
We have, I mean, we have no control what people are getting.
No, no, I know, but what I'm saying is, but what I'm saying is that, to justify that, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala, is that, in essence, they're somewhat right, because Bigwell's, JP and them got a building, there's buildings here in Carrizo, and there's nothing in Asherton. And Asherton is as deserving as any other town in the county of Dimen. So you do deserve a building. Judge Beef Martinez deserves a building. Now Constable Manuel Rosas deserves a building. And it could be had in Asherton. We, we know very clear here that we have property in Asherton. There is property to build in Asherton. Or it could be in Carrizo Hill, or shoot, we could do it in Catarina, or five and seven, wherever y'all wanna build it. But it should be built. And I think that, um, my, my motion is going to be that we, um, have housed in the Petri Building Commissioner Núñez-Cavala, Constable Rosas, Ms. Miranda, and the auditors in the HR office. Do you still wanna say something, Mr. Pereira? The Commissioner's asking me that, well, you were raising your hand. I, I wasn't looking. I'm sorry.
Actually, I was. One thing I was gonna mention is, because I, I did meet with Commissioner Núñez-Cavala, and I did get with the architect, and the first thing he told me is, that, "Well, don't you have the high school?" That's what it was bought for. So we bought the high school back in.
That's true. You guys really seen the high schools. That take us more.
You mean the, you mean the elementary in Asherton, not the high school?
The whole property, the whole school.
I know, but it's, it's.
I know.
It's not the high school. It's elementary.
Well, they, the school property that we, that's out there. And so he basically understood that they were gonna build something out there, so.
Okay, but albeit from all of that, she doesn't want the school. This was already approved. She doesn't want to remodel or fix the school for her building. She got approved to get a building built. Let's build the building.
Okay, I understand.
Why are we going in circles to keep fighting? It got approved in 2021 for her and Mr. Beef, Mr. Martine, JP Martinez. Did it include for a constable and a constable office? Let's build it. Why are we fighting? Why are we keep going in circles? She can be here at the Petri. You can be at the Petri. Mr. Ortiz can be at the Petri. Y'all move one time. She will have to move two, three times, but then she'll have her building. Y'all move once, and you stay there.
Mr. Pereira, do you have land out there?
There is land there.
Yes, there is.
Aside, aside from the, the thing, the, the school?
Yes.
So what, what the land?
Yes, there's a land right there, right in front of Mr. Mrs. Ortiz, is correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Núñez-Cavala? Thank you. That is gonna be my motion.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala.
Just, uh, just for the record, I don't believe, I have nothing against moving, all of us moving same building, but between me and Mr. Pereira, we also have a bunch of vials that won't be able to all fit in that one building.
There's a storage?
There's a storage in the back.
It's a huge storage?
It's huge. Well, we'll, we'll get with you. Commissioner Núñez-Cavala has the keys, correct, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala? And I think that my office has a duplicate. I'm not sure, don't quote me, but we can definitely take you over there so you can look at it.
Plus, we would need room for server as well.
There's a server room in there.
There's a server room already.
Yes, sir. So the motion is, give me one second. The motion is to. So, um, this was put on the agenda a month or two ago, um, in regards to, um, and the way that it was requested on the agenda. I know that Commissioner Juan at the time was under the difficult time understanding, because he thought you guys wanted to open two new water wells, but essentially, what you're requesting is that we have managing IT services in the current, um, water wells that are there. So you're essentially asking this court to approve you having accessibility, um, from your utility office to that location. I know that there was a concern from Commissioner Juan that Chris Plaster was the one that was going to be somewhat in charge or somewhat included or part of this, and he had an issue with his work ethic. I suppose he's still gonna be the person in charge of it, Commissioner Renna? Chris Plaster?
My understanding is.
And you're gonna stand on his work ethic and recommend, recommend the court to approve it?
I personally never had an issue with him.
And the price for this is $1,461.38. Is that a recurring fee or is it a one-time fee?
A one-time fee, but without the taxes. It'll just be $1,350.
$1,350, one-time fee?
One-time fee.
And is there a, like a monthly fee in regards to the service or like the, the server for that, or?
Uh, eventually, when it does, it's up and going, there will be. It won't, it won't be from Mr. Plaster. He's just down to, to, uh, troubleshoot the, the problem why we don't have state of, because we used to.
So my understanding is that the county owns the software already. What Mr. Plaster will be coming in is rebooting and re-aligning everything to communicate, because we lost communication, uh, back about a little over eight, nine months ago. So that, that's gonna be the only job that he's gonna be involved with, is connecting this server to communicate with the water wells, to where Mr. Durre or anybody within that office can monitor the levels, the chlorination, and the, uh, any type of issues with the pumps.
Okay. And when is this take off, eh?
Uh, if it is approved today, uh, Mr. Plaster will probably be scheduled to come in sometime next week, and then it won't take him probably three, four hours to get everything, uh, back up.
Okay, thank you.
So Chris Plaster, Chris Plaster is only gonna be, um, it's gonna be like a one-time job, so then he's gonna just go reboot it, reboot it, reconnect it, uh, and that's it? That's all we're using him for?
That's it.
That's right.
And then is he going to train or bring in, um, IT so that way?
That has nothing to do with IT. Mr. Edu is the one that's in charge of looking at those wells, so that won't have to deal with IT.
My question is, like, what happens if they go again, like, are we gonna have to come back, or is that a thing that they can train?
Possibly.
Then do you have to come back?
That's a different system.
Is it? Okay.
Any other questions? Commissioner Núñez-Cavala? I have a motion by Commissioner Núñez-Cavala. I have a second by Commissioner Talamantes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. 3.18, Discussion and Appropriate Action to Rescind the Flexile Systems Contract. Commissioners, as you are aware, um, we had upgraded the, what we thought was gonna be an upgrade for the, um, telephone services, um, back in April 11th of 2023, um, with Flexile Systems. I'm sure as many of you are aware, our telephone services have not to date, have not been converted to that Flexile system. So in discussing this with Commissioner Talamantes, our IT, Mr. Castaneda, myself, and Mr. Pereira, um, we were trying to get to the resolution as to why nothing had been done in terms of replacing, um, and installing the new phone systems. Um, and essentially, Flexile couldn't really give us an answer, other than they kind of gave, um, at the time, Mr. Mendez, Marqui Mendez, and Javier, kind of the phones, and pretty much just left them there, essentially never came and installed them for them, never did any of those things. So, um, looking at the contract, looking at how much the costs were going to be at the time, um, and in speaking with vested networks, vested networks gave us a lower quote, excuse me, of $1,996.50 for the whole phone setups, whereas Flexile System was gonna charge us $3,000, and obviously, like I said, has not, um, installed those. Mr. Castaneda did advise us that with him being the only IT at the time, um, it would be, um, extremely difficult for him to kind of tackle that on by himself. So I'm respectfully requesting at this time the approval for Commissioner's Court to authorize me to rescind that contract. Um, right now, we haven't made any payment, um, to Flexile System, because obviously, the systems haven't been set up, other than, um, a percentage. Um, but Mr. Pereira is working on, um, getting that in return, because I was reading the contract, and because they have not, um, done any of the work, we're allowed to be able to rescind from that contract. So that's what that is. And 3.19 is a follow-up to approve the vested contract, which is the $1,996.50 for vested.
I have a question, Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. P, we cannot approve vested networks, because it has to be bidded out.
They're.
They're buyboard.
Tips. They're a few tips.
Even, even though they're tips?
Yeah, they're tips, like.
It's like buyboard.
It's co-op.
It's co-op.
We belong to tips, too.
So if we let go of Flexile, we, or not be for the, it'll be just to sell?
To set up the telephone services, or the telephone equipment, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala? Motion? Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Caruana, motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Talamantes. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Aye.
I have one opposition, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala. Motion carries. 3.20, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval for Road Embryage Precinct Four to Accept Donation from SM Energy.
Judge.
Yes, ma'am.
How about it back in Commissioner's Court, sometime back, we had a donation from St. Mary's, uh, for the garden, for the Wellness Poolition Garden, and for the, at the Rita Park. When they came back in May, there was no downer amount. So they brought us the check. It was deposited to Mr. Ortiz for $9,500.
$9,500.
To be used toward the community garden, and whatever's needed for the garden and the park.
Perfect.
Motion. And this is in, in Catarina, correct, ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, for Catarina.
Okay.
I have a motion by Commissioner Renna, second by Commissioner Talamantes. Any further discussion? And just for the record, Commissioner Núñez-Cavala, if you can please send my regards to SM and thank them. I know they're gonna be here next Commissioner's Court for the presentation of the check for the donation they're making to the sports complex, but just for the record and for you to send my regards, that we appreciate, um, their long-term commitment to our community. 3.21, Discussion and Appropriate Action to Approve. Excuse me? I have a motion by Commissioner Renna, and a second by Commissioner Talamantes. And I didn't get a vote?
Yes, it was.
I didn't.
So one with Commissioner Núñez-Cavala?
Oh, no, no, no. Yeah, you're correct. Um, on the donation. Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Medina. 3.21, Discussion and Appropriate Action to Approve Holiday Savings for Dimen County Employees, Precinct Four.
We have every paycheck, Commissioner Talamantes, whoever wants to participate, they can put whatever savings they want. Let's say, for instance, $50 for the break check. And then before Thanksgiving, they see that check given to them, but it's money that they already earned.
Is it taxed? Do they give it to you?
Sure, sure.
Um, Mr. Ortiz has come in, please. What did you want to ask him?
So it's, uh, whenever they make the money, it is taxed, but whenever we give it back to them, it's not.
So it's just taxed once?
It's just taxed once. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz.
Are they dangerous, like?
Okay, no, that's, that's something that actually came up last year.
How about the interest?
About the interest. The county keeps the interest made from what we keep for them. We don't give the interest back to the employee. But that did come up last year, but they only get the money put in. The county keeps the interest.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Renna motioned it? Who seconded? Commissioner, who, who seconded? I'm sorry. Second by Commissioner Núñez-Cavala? I know, I couldn't hear. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 3.22, Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval of Quarterly Report from Sanitation Department, Precinct Four. Good morning, Ms. Medina.
Good afternoon, good morning.
Or, good afternoon.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I don't have it. Did you send me a report, Ms. Mieden? Yeah.
Our last one that's here was.
It's right here?
Oh, is it the second? The second? Yeah, that's the network for your.
I have it. I got it. It's under, it's in the back, Commissioner Noguera. On the Sanitation, Dimon County Sanitation Customer, and it's a report, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I think that's the network that was here, it was on a different.
On a different?
Yeah, it's on a different one. Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to applaud Ms. Mieden for an awesome job that she does for sanitation, not only for sanitation, but for commodities. We were audited and we passed our audits. We've been passing them for the past few, ever since we've had commodities. On the sanitation, we were, but we were, not proposed, but to bring in $300,000 last year, and we brought in $336,651.25. We exceeded what we were proposed to bring in. So for that, I thank you, Ms. Mieden, for everything that you do.
I have a question, Commissioner Noguera. On that revenue, the $336,000, and then on the next page, the expenses, the total revenue, is that the $336,000 or we still have to subtract the $228,000?
On that one, we would subtract. But of course, I know this past year, we had a lot of the trucks that broke down and stuff, so the new trucks we got, the trucks that were breaking down, just on one truck, I think we spent like almost $80,000, $90,000 on one truck. But hopefully with the new trucks that we got, we don't have that issue this coming fiscal year.
And plus, we're going to be one time short. He burned it up.
Who?
Somebody. Started a fire. He ruined a dumpster.
He sent an entire dumpster on fire? In years' time?
Okay, let's see. Are there any other questions of Ms. Mieden?
Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
We ordered the new coverings for the dumpsters, and they're still back ordered. So that's taking a while, so.
Did we get those dumpsters in commission, the ones that we had ordered? It was like six or something?
Not yet.
Not yet?
So what we're doing, we're buying the material with tins and just trying to patch up what we can.
And on the two-yard dumpsters, we didn't have Trevor from Hell come in to give the safety training with the new trucks. The two-yarders are probably going to become obsolete, and we're probably going to stop ordering them, so we did.
Those models?
The small ones. We did make a PO request to repair those bottoms, but we put a stop to it because our trucks, the way they make them now, the models, they don't support the two-yarders. They require us to do a lot of modifications on the two-yard dumpsters as far as putting weight on the back so that they can fall back them down. And then the height of the two-yarders does not reach the trucks.
So if you see our old trucks running, that's the reason why we're going to, the two-yarders will become all these.
They did say the same thing, the city had the issue, the same issue, the two-yarders are long-reasing, San Antonio and other places are long-reasing, the two-yarders is all for the same reasons of the way they're making the trucks now.
Are there questions of Ms. Mieden? If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Uranda.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Talamantes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. 3.23 Discussion and Appropriate Action to Approve MTL Construction Change Order to Increase Drop Off From Two Feet Six Inches to Six Inch Drop Off.
The concrete, Judge, maybe Mr. Venda would know, on the basketball court, instead of being the 2.6, they're maintaining.
Oh, they're increasing it.
They're increasing it.
To a two-and-a-half inch drop off. So that's going to take more concrete. Everywhere it's being constructed, Commissioner, is it a lower here?
Like a flat door?
At the very end, it is. So we're going to do it in the middle.
So.
I know we have the basketball court at the county park, and then we have the one at the, by the church.
The placita.
That this will benefit some residential residents, because it'll be right there.
That'll come out through your CO or where's that coming from?
It's coming out of my COs.
Okay. Because, so just to clarify, the $49,260, $16.60, it's an increase from the original cost? So it's going to cost more? Okay.
What was it for cost? $107,000.
And this is the $107,000, so it'll be like approximately? Like? Huh?
No, I'll do my math by myself.
So it's $107,000.20?
No, it's $60.
Don't pull her on the $107,000.
What's this, what did you do?
65,120?
So this is just strictly for the, just for the floor? The slab? Thank you.
We didn't get any bids for the, to erect the port? We have to go back to bid it out to see if we have any bids?
So the, it'll be approximately like $156,000 to put the slab? Crazy, right? How expensive it is just to put concrete? $156,000? Wow. Okay. I will. Who motioned it?
I will motion.
Motion by Commissioner Talamantes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Noguera. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Discussion. Commissioners, somebody else has to go in there to erect the other stuff? 3.24 Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval for County Judge Montaponta to Attend the Ninth Annual Water and Wastewater Regional on February 19th through the 21st in Eagle Pass, Texas.
Judge, I have a question.
Monday.
Is there any way that I could attend this training? Maybe just with water and wastewater?
Yes, for the utility?
Yes.
Yes. I will give you that information, and I was possibly thinking of, I will give the information to Commissioner Noguera as well, since she has the Curiezo Hill, Commissioner Noguera. So I'll give Ms. Mieden to get with you guys. You're wrong.
But for right now, it's just you, right?
For right now, it's me, yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Noguera, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. 4.1 Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval for Investigator Sergio Creto and Eva Stamps to Attend the TDCCA Investigator Conference, February 3rd through the 6th in College Station.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Do I have a motion by Commissioner Noguera?
Second.
Do I have, Ms. Stamps? I only have. I only have. Okay, I found it. Who motioned? I apologize.
I.
Commissioner Noguera?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Motion carries. 4.2 Discussion and Appropriate Action, Approval to Repair 2021 GMC Sierra Pickup and ID Auto Body Paints.
Commissioners, I'm wondering on the Commissioners Court or whatever you're doing, the truck, we've been waiting for approval, do I?
Which one's this one, Sheriff?
Involved with one of the GMCs, well, it's a good truck, it's still worth fixing, but if not.
Let me see.
I believe the insurance already paid it off some.
That's the, for $17,000?
That's correct.
Okay, Mr. Pereira's not here. That one has not been approved because there was an issue. The insurance paid $10,000 and the county had to pay $7,000 out of pocket for deductibles and all kinds of stuff. And Mr. Pereira advised my office that we needed to hold up on that PO because there was an issue with the insurance. He's not here right now. But I'll follow up with you, Sheriff, by the end of the day, let me follow up with him to see what happened. But that's the issue with that one.
Okay.
And you said that the, it is, once they fix it, because it says it don't frame, normally whenever a frame and a vehicle is messed up, it's, yeah. Is it going to be good?
It should be good, I mean, the knowledge of the problem, but the insurance would have said it's not fixable, they should have, they would have told us.
Yeah, that's why, I don't know if that's the concern or not with Mr. Pereira, but I'll advise with him and then I'll, what I was advised in terms of.
My question is, Judge, can he fix it with the budget and then whatever we get from the insurance, it'll?
I just, I don't know. I don't know if it's in his budget.
We told him before to get the, so wooden cost.
So wooden.
County money. And making sure that everything was, oh, we did hear you first.
Yeah, but I understand that, but in order to get it fixed, he needs to fix it. But if he has the money to pay for it, I mean, we're going to get the check either way, we're going to get the money, we just don't know how much we're going to get.
Well. I'm just going to make sure.
I'll get your answer by the end of the day, Sheriff, as soon as we, I'll call Mr. Pruski myself.
Opinion?
Monday?
Opinion?
Yes, sir. 4.3 Discussion and Appropriate Action, Jail Status?
That's not.
No action.
Good afternoon.
Judge, in December, we had a long call on the marshals due to that we were, I was doing touch-ups on the sales. So we had eight-man tanks, so we moved each one individually, but we came back from holidays and got eight more marshals.
Sheriff, did we decide about that rate?
Yes, I'm working on that. I want to sit down with the treasurer because there's a lot of information that I got to put in that, I got to get the information from him to, on the amount of employees. You got to go with your employees, a budget from the jail.
Okay.
But like, it's asking for federal tax ID, federal taxes paid and all that, I need to get with the treasurer, sit down and get it.
Yeah, can we follow up on that? Because I feel like we're getting short-shaffed because it's only $57 a day, and I know, like I told you the last time, and I'm sure you guys are both aware, the surrounding communities are getting at least a minimum $80 a day.
Yes.
For the marshals, and we're at $57. And that's only revenue for the county to help defer costs, so, if we could follow up with that, please. Other questions of the jail?
Everything's up and running at the jail?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
All lights, cameras, everything?
Everything, yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Mieden. Motion by Commissioner Noguera?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? We have one abstention, that is Commissioner Talamantes, she stepped out.
Judge, can we go back to the sheriff's truck?
Sure.
And open, open up your questions?
You're motioning to have it open?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Uranda? Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at the check that we received. We received the check from the insurance back in April. So what is the full level? It's been deposited to our account, so what are we?
I think it wasn't until November.
Here it is, it was issued on 4/8, that's when we got the check and it was deposited.
Was that it, Commissioner Noguera?
Is that not the fire trucks?
No, that's, yeah, that's for his fire trucks.
It's right here, Stone Garden, 2021 CO.
Oh, no. Mine's okay.
I'll go back to the check, but we have to wait on that one. That was ours.
We still have to wait?
No. We, we. He said that was his mistake.
That was his office mistake, maybe? I don't know. I.
Is that what you said, Commissioner? I would have to go back to the check, that's, yeah, that was when we were notified.
See, and that also is a little bit misleading as well, Commissioner Noguera, because this, this check says it's for $10,000, but the PO is requesting for $17,000.
Yeah, because the check was $10,231.26.
75 cents.
And then to repair it, it's $17,000.
So there would still be money having to come out of the sheriff's budget.
But my question was, if it was already sent out to us, a deposit?
Yeah, okay. May, I think that was one of the questions that we have for them, because a lot of us, the difference.
It should have been complete? Exactly. It wasn't like this.
Their adjuster should come somewhat closer to what the actual.
Exactly.
We were still, we were still arguing with them.
So essentially, if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Noguera, going back to Commissioner Uranda saying the adjuster should have came back to a number close to what it should have cost, and they're, they took the, the truck is saying $17,000, but the adjuster's saying, no, it's $10,000. So I think that's another issue as to why.
Just the parts itself is $13,500. And then of course, the labor, it's $4,000.
Right, so that, yeah, and I think I worked correctly.
I agree, Commissioner.
It was an issue with the difference.
Because that's a little big difference.
And I think we did contact them, they were going to send it, or they were selling it, I thought we did.
So it's been deposited already?
That's the first part. But then we still had an, we still had the argument of the difference, which is what we're trying to settle. Still, I guess. If I may?
Yeah.
The only thing I want to kind of add to this is, if there is a $7,000 or $10,000 difference for a department being held down on one unit that they need to use, I always say in the future, we need to discuss it. And we have to run the Commission Court, to run the Commission Court, to fix it or not, but we need to. I understand that, but the problem is if they come back and they want to look at it or if there's an issue with it, it's already been repaired.
Because I was, the other issue was about us being sued, remember?
So, but don't think, because as an owner of the truck, you're going to let it sit there for a year?
Sometimes you have to legalize, and Mr. Goza, this was years.
Run the truck for me and call it a total loss. No. But that's what the deal was with giving the adjuster.
Commissioner Uranda, whenever you have a PI, personal lawsuit?
Uh huh.
I'll take you. No, I said, when you do have one, and Commissioner Alonso can probably attest to this, and there's an accident, you have to preserve that evidence and you have to preserve that vehicle. That's the way I was understood, that the reason why they couldn't touch that vehicle was because we were getting sued for the liability of.
That's hard, that's hard to, to understand, because if it was a personal vehicle, you're telling me my truck would sit there for a year?
They do that.
Have a little vehicle?
For their injuries.
Yes.
For their injuries.
And they're.
We just called a car and nothing happened, or?
To the other people.
Went to the hospital, but I believe his pickup truck was, I mean, his car was already fixed.
Second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Claim Docket Five Point Three, General Fund, one million four hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-eight and twenty-nine cents. Dimon County Airport, one thousand three hundred and eighty-four and fifty-two cents. Dimon County Golf Course, twenty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-one and fifteen cents. Courthouse Security, thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four and thirty-four cents. Records Management, twenty-nine, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight and fourteen cents. Utilities, one hundred eight thousand one hundred and eighty-five and sixty-three cents. Rodeo Arena, nine hundred and four dollars and sixty cents. Sixteen cents, Stone Garden, eighty-three thousand six hundred and forty and forty-five cents. Operation Lone Stone Program, forty-four thousand one hundred and seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Dimon County Payroll, one million eighty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-four and sixty-three cents. Tax Note Series, four hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred, two hundred and forty dollars and thirty-two cents. Tax Note Series, twenty twenty-three, eight thousand twenty-two dollars and twenty-two cents. Tax Note Series, twenty twenty-four, seventy-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-six and fifty cents. C O's, twenty nineteen, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. C O's, twenty twenty-one, twenty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars, for a total of three million three hundred and twenty-seven thousand fifty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Motion by Commissioner Uroka.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Urenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Judge, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It might not pretend to this, but on the pithy rubings, since it was paid with my COs, now that all, or these term, are we going to get, are they going to be...
We have mercy. We can...
Hello. Thank you, Commissioner.
It was paid with my money, so I...
Thank you, that's what I'm saying, thank you.
So now you can pay back?
She wants you to pay her back, is what she's saying. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to recess and adjourn the regular meeting.
Aye.
Motion by Commissioner Valery. Uroka, second by Commissioner Alonso Carmona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. The timeout, Ms. McDaniel, is one oh two, and I am calling the public facilities meeting to order one point three, we'll call, let the referee reflect that all parties are present, to include all four Commissioners and County Judge. One point three, approval of minutes of regular meeting, December sixteenth, twenty